I'd like to call order to our meeting on Monday, January 28th, 2013. Please join Vice Mayor Osborne and the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation. Thank you.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Heavenly Father, today's prayer is one of health and healing. We are a city full of bountiful goodness and a city of great prosperity and expectation, but we are a city that has citizens that need healing. We lift up the ones whose bodies are in need of complete curing and strength restored. We also have people who need healing of their hearts and souls, who grieve and are in sadness. We ask for restoration of their spirit and hope. Lastly, we ask for the healing and protection of our nation and our people who put themselves in harm's way. Grant them your shield and in your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see we are still in attendance, all of us. So, our first item will be on communication and this is always such a great pleasure for me to be able to always recognize those people in our community who do an outstanding job. So, I would like to recognize Patricia Scarpa, the Principal of Desert Star School, who won the Rodell Exemplary Principal Award. Could you come forward, please? Come up here and stand beside me. Okay. We're just so pleased you could come tonight. Great, let me just set this one down here. Too many pieces of paper in here. This is a recognition letter for someone that's terrific and outstanding. Mrs. Patricia Scarpa, Principal of the Desert Star School in Goodyear, has brought great honor and credit to her profession, school, and city with her achievement of being recognized as the 2013 Rodell Exemplary Principal. Mrs. Scarpa's dedication to educational excellence has distinguished her as a leader in the West Valley and the Avondale Elementary School district. Mrs. Scarpa's commitment to achievement of each individual student comes from her belief, her truly belief, that all children are capable of success without exception. Mrs. Scarpa's leadership is demonstrated by her support, encouragement, and advisement of all her schoolteachers using her 23 years. Congratulations, 23 years of education is a model of positive change in the classroom. Mrs. Scarpa has upheld the core values of her school and profession by demonstrating a strong commitment to her students and community by going beyond, I'm going to say it again, beyond the state's educational standards to create a meaningful connection to the classroom and learning experiences. Mrs. Scarpa has demonstrated the qualities of character and excellence that are truly respected and admired by her peers, her students, and the community. For these reasons, the mayor and this entire council feels this way, on behalf of the City of Goodyear, Arizona recognizes your actions to be valuable contribution to our community in keeping up with the finest ideals of citizens and professionalism. And we thank you so much and now this is your moment to say something.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Lord, thank you Vice Mayor Osborne, council members, guests, and I certainly would not be standing here today before you if it were not for my amazing Superintendent, Dr. Hargrove, here in the audience, whose nomination started this entire process. So, I certainly appreciate her support and her commitment. And certainly, for other folks in the audience, I'd like to recognize my husband, Matt, without whose support I also would not be standing here, and daughter, Carissa. It's been amazing. I've been at Desert Star for seven years now, been part of the Avondale School family for seven years out here in Goodyear, and it's been an amazing journey. Incredible things are happening in our schools and it is truly an honor to be a part of such a vibrant, vibrant district and a vibrant city. And I'm just incredibly honored to be a part of it and be recognized by not only my superintendent, by Rodell as well. So, thank you again for this incredible honor and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We would like a picture, so if everybody will get, I want the whole team to come up. So, come on, guys. You tell us how you can get us all in here. We got a couple of short people, so come on. Can you just tell me? We got one here doesn't, can't be seen.
You know, Mr. City Manager, this would be definitely one of those people that are the star of Goodyear. And I was just thinking, wouldn't it be cool to have some kind of wall that was the Goodyear Stars and the people that have gotten recognized for things like this? We have little stars with their names, you know, the Goodyear Stars. That would be pretty cool.
That's not a bad suggestion. We'll have to have a discussion on that. That sounds like a good idea. Thank you for that. Okay. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Are there, is there, let me see, with the council, or go down. So, anybody from the audience would like to speak that didn't fill out a card? Okay, well then we're going to go on to our consent agenda. Consent Agenda 6.2 and 6.5, will we move from, to the business? So, did everybody get that notification? I just want you to know that.
Sorry, no.
Okay. So, Item 6.2 and 6.5, will we move to the business? We felt that there were, there were a bit of need, some of the council, to a presentation on them, so that's why we did that. So, will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.6 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a special meeting and a regular meeting held on January 14th, 2013. Item 6.3, Council Award Contract CON-122113 to Mariposa Horticulture Enterprises for a base fee of $482,476.72 to provide landscape services for certain medians, right-of-ways, and facilities. Item 6.4, Adopt Resolution 13-1534, authorizing the City Manager or Designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa County Department of Transportation to implement a cooperative maintenance program and providing for an effective date. Item 6.6, Adopt Resolution 13-1535, to be proactive and involved in the state governmental decision-making processes directly affecting the city legislative priorities identified in the City Council Action Form Report and the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Legislative Priorities and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item on the consent agenda?
I have a question, Mayor.
All right, question?
On 6.4, and this may not actually coincide with this, but I just wanted to ask the question. I know that this morning it really became an issue, I was told by residents, but on Indian School Row, just east of the 303, we are having major roadway, it's just falling apart. And I don't know that this is, I just see that they're talking about performs grading or obviously not, street sweeping is not that issue, but is this roadway our problem because of the 303 issue or how are we, can somebody address that for me?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I would ask Engineering to address that question.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Indian School Row to the east of the 303, beyond about, oh, maybe 200 feet from the center of the freeway, is the City of Goodyear Street. So, we're responsible for the maintenance. We've been working, trying to work closely with ADOT. They've got a project that will provide some paving improvements from their east right-of-way line going east over to Saravelle. They're going to actually install two new paved lanes. So, working with them, we're trying to maintain a safe roadway, but I guess minimize the investment until that road is replaced, probably this spring. So, we've been watching it. The rain really quickly degraded it, so today we had our staff go out there and begin repairing the potholes. And we're going to be watching that very closely until the road is replaced with the ADOT project.
Okay, thank you.
So, that complaint was from today? Is that from?
Well, ironically, I was on it yesterday going out to the white tanks and then I was getting messages today about these big potholes that occurred. But it was awful. I hate to say, I mean, it is awful, so.
Yes.
Are you talking, yes, are you talking about Indian School from Saravelle east to 303 or are you talking about 303 towards Cotton Lane? I mean, Indian School from 303 to Cotton Lane?
I'm talking about, Mayor and council member, I'm talking about this section of Indian School that would be to the east of the 303, so between the 303 and Saravelle.
Okay, Councilmember, our Vice Mayor Osborne, what area are you talking about? From Saravelle to 303? Where it goes down from two lanes to, three lanes to two lanes?
Probably right past Pebble Creek.
Okay, that's the area.
Yes.
That's the area that Councilmember Stiff and I have asked that it be made to a four-lane and?
Well, it just needs to be made.
Yes, because it's even worse now, but when it's not wet and rainy, it's even, it's really dangerous because of the amount of traffic that's on there right now. So, that's on our CIP, right?
It is, in fact, but it's not until, I think it's the third and fourth year of our CIP. So, we're trying to advance that to next year.
Okay, thank you.
But in the meantime, you're taking care of or trying to help make it more drivable with some repairs? Is that what I'm understanding you saying?
Mayor Lord, that is correct. In the meantime, we'll monitor it and keep it in a safe condition until it can be replaced.
All right. Does there need to be any additional sign out there or, you know, to slow up or beware or anything like that?
We actually have some new signage that's being made right now. We hope to install it, I think by the end of this week, as soon as it's been fabricated.
Thank you.
All right, great. Then could I have a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stiff and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to the business agenda and we'll start out first with 6.2, Adopt Resolution 131529, ratifying the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Interior, Bureau of Reclamation for Water Smart, Water Smart, I mean, Water and Energy Efficiency Grant for 2013 and authorizing the City Manager to execute all documents related to this application. So, presentation by Sandra Rota. Hello there, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. I'm pleased to come before you once again to give you an opportunity to support a project that will save water for the city and also save money from our budget.
I'd like to hear both of those.
I'd imagine I have your ear. The Bureau of Reclamation provides funding for a limited number of projects each year under this particular opportunity. The city has a project that we've been discussing for some time and some available matching funds that we think can be extended by taking advantage of this grant opportunity. The resolution that we request from you today would be a standard ratification that we do in fact have the match. We plan to move forward at this time with the project and that the management will be authorized to do all the appropriate things to take advantage of the grant. So, the particular project that we've put together is going to take advantage of an opportunity to better use a water resource we currently have close at hand. Every year, the use of our water that is returned to through the sewers is upgraded by our reclamation facilities. However, most of that water is then discharged at this point in time down the Gila River or to Palo Verde Generating Station with no income to the city and no other immediate gain for us. We have a new option. What we'd like to do is to build five Vado Zone wells to put that water back in the ground here in the city and maintain it as a resource to use in the future in the event of drought or another reason that we have a water supply shortage. This is exactly the type of project that Bureau of Reclamation has designated these types of funds for, to improve water resources, to eventually avoid problems with drought or shortages that may be caused by population growth. We can anticipate population growth in this city. We do anticipate that we will need more water resources, so storage of this water makes good sense to us. The project proposal anticipates that we will use existing city property. On this map, we've shaded a bunch of areas that are close to the source of the water that we're talking about. We're talking about using the reclaimed water. We currently have basically one line running north from the water treatment plant at 157th Avenue along Estrella Parkway. So, what we've done is propose that the site for this project will be along that alignment on city property that's nearby. This particular method of putting water back in the ground does not take as much space as the spreading basins that we used to use at the Soil Aquifer Treatment Facility. In fact, it takes only about 900 square feet per well, so we would even be able to fit it in right away. The map you see there shades all the city property that lies within a relatively short distance of the existing reclaimed line, so that we'd be able to take greatest advantage for lowest cost in construction. The city is already putting together a scope of work for hydrology study that will identify which areas would be the best location for this project. Where will putting the water in the ground get us the most recharge? What will minimize the cost of construction to get the most water in the ground? That will be completed before Bureau of Reclamation announces who will get this grant. So, we will be able to narrow it down before the time that they will actually announce an award. This project funding is readily available to us. The city has on hand 1.2.144 million dollars in CIP funds for reclaimed water projects. This money has been available since 2010 and it's rolled over because it hasn't been used yet for a project. What we are proposing is a project that will cost 2.163350. We're going to use $300,000, if we can get it, from Bureau of Reclamation to stretch $1.8 million from the city a little bit further. That will leave us a balance of nearly $300,000 to carry forward for another project. This project will save us 2,800 acres of feet, acre-feet of water per year. That's based on current specifications. Perhaps we will be able to save more depending on the particular geology that we find. However, each year, as we use more water, we generate more reclaimed water. So, in the future, we'll have a greater opportunity to save more water in this particular fashion. So, rolling, holding on to those $300,000 is a guaranteed expenditure in the future. We will have something that we can use when we're ready to move to the next additional capacity for putting water back in the ground. What questions may the council have for this particular proposal?
In a moment, thank you. That was a great presentation. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 131529 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 13-1529, ratifying the submission of grant application to the U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Reclamation for Water Smart, Water and Energy Efficiency Grant for FY 2013 and authorizing the City Manager to execute all documents related to this application.
Thank you. May I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Stiff. Open for council discussion.
I have two quick questions.
Councilman Campbell?
I have two quick questions. How much are we applying for? How much is the grant? It's my first question. And the second question is, the match, is the match, the 1,808,000 match, is that coming out of the CIP funds?
Councilman Campbell and council members and Mayor Lord, yes, you've understood correctly. We are requesting that they give us $300,000 and we would, as a match of 86%, put in 1.863 and the additional funds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, just to clarify, if we do not receive this grant, are we still going forward with this project anyway?
At this time, we do have those funds available and we are going to pursue the hydrology study. We will be coming back to you for approval of appropriate expenditures. What we would be able to do if we get the grant is get an extra well out of it without having to spend those city funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Stiff?
Is this the project that allows us to use the reclaimed water at the ballpark or is that, is that the existing piece?
Okay. We are currently using water at the ballpark that is reclaimed and that will not change. We would still be able to use that. However, I believe the project you're referring to is the project to possibly use remediated water from the super fund at the ballpark.
Oh, yes, 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 okay.
And then, if we can do that, the reclaimed water would be available for recharge through a project like this, so we get even more out of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? I just want to make a comment. I just think it's great that our water department is looking towards the future with each one of these moves. This is, I mean, it is so necessary and just at the conference recently that I was at, I mean, the water is talked about a great deal and preserving it and future plans and so, kudos to the department for continually to come up with these suggestions and ideas that is going to help us with. Yes, Joe?
Just real quick, what is the status of taking the remediation water? Just refresh my memory and laying, I guess, the pipe to replenish, to use for the ballpark, which saves us money.
We've gotten word from the state that we will be able to gain the exemption, we hope for, for that water and we are pursuing with PGA South and the Engineering Department, the engineering necessary to be able to move forward with that.
So, you've got the approval to use it. Now, we just got to get it transported to?
Just got to get it up there.
Yeah.
Right. There's a few details here and there to?
No, I understand that, but you've got the first hurdle over, which is the approval to use it, so thank you.
Any other questions? Then could I please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, thank you so much. All right, let's go to the next item, six, the next item to consider, we sending the prior approval of Palm Valley 9 and approving the revised panel for Palm Valley, okay, Valley, isn't that the same, we're just doing the same, 9 and 9. Okay, thank you. Brett Burmeham to present?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord, members of the council. This is a final plat for Palm Valley Phase 9 and final, I'll explain why this is a unique case here in a moment, but I first wanted to get everyone oriented with the subject property. Palm Valley Phase 9, you can see here, it's located on the north side of Camelback Road. It's about 3/4 of a mile west of Litchfield Road and as you can see, the existing land uses surrounding this property, to the north, we have Luke Air Force Base, to the south, we have both Palm Valley Phase 5 and also portions of Litchfield Park. To the east, there is some vacant land and also the Sun Health property and to the west, you can see the Falcon Dunes Golf Course in Maricopa County. And the next exhibit, okay, I wanted to show you, this exhibit shows the final plat that was approved in 2006. And it was submitted by Sun Core Development Company and it was approved by the City Council. And when it was submitted, it included 209 acres. You can see that it has 218 lots in this area, single-family residential lots. There's also one medium-density residential parcel that's located right here. And also to the west, there are 20 light industrial lots, this area right here, there are 20 light industrial lots. And then to the west, there is a large 57-acre tract that was a park, right here. So, that was a park tract in the Bullard Wash area. The final plat was approved in 2006, however, it was not recorded by the developer. The properties changed hands a number of times and now we have an applicant, the current owner of the property.
And can I interrupt you? Why did you think, why did they not record the property in your estimation?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, I think at the time, there wasn't a requirement. The plat wouldn't have expired. We've since fixed that provision. Also, sometimes developers don't want to record plots if they don't have to. It may increase their taxes on the property. So, in 2000, end of 2012, we have a new applicant. The property is now owned by Crown Phoenix Palm Valley, who were represented tonight by Mark Voight, Voight Properties of Scottsdale. And I want to show you the new plat that we have for 2013. Okay, I'm going to try to put them next to each other so you can compare as I, as I talk. So, the plat that we have before us this evening, it now only contains 89 acres. You still have the same 218 single-family lots in the same configuration. We still have the one medium-density residential parcel. The industrial property is not being proposed to be platted at this time and is proposed to remain unsubdivided. And the, regarding the park area, this large parcel here, Sun Core conveyed the park property to the City of Goodyear in 2010 for a park, for a future park. And so, tonight, the City Council is being asked to first rescind the approval of the original final plat for Palm Valley Phase 9 and to approve a revised final plat for the residentially-zoned portions of this property. And just a few quick notes, as has been discussed at length before, the residential uses are located outside of the high noise contours for Luke Air Force Base. And also, there is a 100-foot wide open space buffer, including a 7-foot-high masonry wall that will help to separate the single-family residential from the future industrial parcels. And that essentially concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have and also Mark Voight with Voight Properties is available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Brett. All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, then could I have a motion and a second, please, from the council?
So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second, was that you, Vice Mayor?
Oh, it was me.
Oh, okay, from Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stiff?
All right. I know I said I wouldn't have any questions, but I actually, while you were making this presentation, a few of them popped in. The, we talked before the meeting about the new ordinances that we've passed that would prevent this from happening in the future. If they're not recorded, they expire. Are those new provisions applicable in this case?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stiff, that's correct. So, a final plat would expire within 90 days. In this instance, the engineering improvement plans are very near, very near completion- near completion, if not, um, completed at this point and the developer has indicated that they have, um, a home builder in mind who intends to move forward immediately.
Okay. The second question that I have, um, the noise lines, um, are in place for the F-16 and I know Luke had expressed concern back when the original application went through about proximity, et cetera. Are we, is there any problem, any concern regarding the F-35 and its noise corridors? Have we, do we even have them?
Excuse me, can I just, uh, interrupt you on this? So we did not have a letter from, uh, Luke Air Force Base?
We did originally.
Okay, accepting this, okay. All right, so are you saying...
So, but my question now is, the noise corridors were drawn for an F-16. The noise corridors have not been drawn for the F-35.
Did those noise corridors change in that area?
Councilmember Lord, or excuse me, Mayor Lord, members of the council, um, when the, when the zoning and, and the preliminary plat, uh, for this area was developed, they utilized the noise contours provided by the Air Force Base. The Air Force Base has not provided any other additional information and we...
I didn't think it changed. That's where my question was out to you. I don't think those lines changed because I asked that very question, I think, out at the base and they stayed the same. And I think our, as I remember, our presentation from the F-35, that was, that was told to us. Do you have any recollection, recollection?
Yeah, Mayor, that's my recollection as well, that the noise contours have not changed.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the last question that I have is regarding the industrial part. Is, has this industrial property been zoned?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, yes, it is zoned for industrial development.
Okay. And that zoning and, I mean, everything is still, just because now we're subdividing what was previously unsubdivided is, uh, and this now becomes a question for the attorney, is our que, is our rescinding what we did, what the council did in two thousand six, gotta have an impact on the zoning that occurred in two thousand and six for the rest of that property?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it, it shouldn't because you're, you're dealing with a plat which follows the zoning. So if you're not touching the underlying zoning, it shouldn't have any effect. So you're just dealing with plats this evening.
Great, thank you.
Does that satisfy all your questions?
Yep.
Great. Anybody else?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
So Brett, to clarify, we're not changing the densities here of the homes. Those are really the staying the same?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, correct. The, the densities of the homes are not changing.
Okay.
It just looks like that because you have numbers on them bottom.
Right.
It's just that the, the non-residential portions of the plat are being left out until the development timing is right.
So really, in a nutshell, that's what this is about. It's not changing the plat. And it's not changing to fifty-foot, um, home areas or anything like that. That's all, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Brett, thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, now we're down to information items. Council, would you like to, uh, give your reports on what you've been doing lately?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Councilman Campbell?
Um, I'm just going to report on one thing that I have done this week because I've been really busy and everything's been wonderful, but I attended, um, the unveiling of Arizona We Want Two Point O, uh, this week and Dr. Laddie Corr presented it and this is a study that's been going on, uh, for quite some time and out of it came some goals and some expectations that I would like to share with council. Um, they did like a Gallup survey for our, for Arizona and the number one, um, item that came out was Arizonians have a high expectation of how wonderful Arizona is. They're here because they love this state and they plan on staying at this state and the, they recognize that education is the key driver for the Arizona economy, uh, that we need to recruit and retain more talented young people who are committed to Arizona's future. We have a lot of young folks going to our universities and graduating and then leaving our state to pursue their careers elsewhere and we need to do a better job of retaining those young people for that talent. Um, Arizonans believe the strength of the state rests in local communities and I thought that was very interesting. Some of the goals are education, job creation, environment and water, infrastructure, healthcare, young talent and civic engagement. And, um, I'm going, uh, I hope we all get a copy of this. I'm gonna share this with council. Um, but it's, uh, it's so wonderful to hear these people talk about how they love this state and, uh, we had a young woman speak to us that said, "My generation is two clicks away from talking to anyone in the world I want to interface with, just two clicks." Everything we do is on internet, a social media and we are really the future. We, um, we want to be at your table talking about the issues. We want to be included in the decisions and while government works very slow, we are not willing to wait for it to work. That we need to get involved in government so that we can move it quicker and I thought that was very interesting.
Hey. That's it. Who would like to be next? Go ahead, Sheri.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just bring up a, a couple of things and we had the meeting with Cooks and Doors and it was very exciting to, to see what's coming to Goodyear and where we are and to see that. And then something else, we spoke, I, I gotta speak to some, speaking of young people, much younger, third graders at Estrella and, and they've decided that the mayor needs a mansion, uh, but we...
Can I say?
And, and they were very impressed. We had a girl mayor, okay? And, and they were learning about government.
I like the word girl. That sounds good.
And, and what I thought was really interesting, when you asked them what they could do to change Goodyear, they said about, especially up in Estrella, about shopping and about a lot of future economic development there. I mean, they were little development planners there, so the planning department should go hit the third grade.
Well, I'd say they've probably been, their parents have been talking to them around the dinner table, wouldn't you? They, to have that kind of input. That was great. Well, thank you for doing that. It's really important, uh, that we do show our presence in the classroom. Yes, Councilman Stip?
All right, um, we had actually a couple of great groundbreakings last week.
Yes, please tell about those.
The nine-one-one center and Millennium High School, uh, Councilmember Barber, the mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, we all were able to attend that, which is, uh, pretty exciting. I know we had a presentation here at our last meeting from, uh, the, um, Director of Building Services, I think, but, uh, it's really neat to see the community starting to, uh, build again and to see our schools, uh, which unfortunately are behind in their building, but to skim go and the jobs that they create, that was, uh, that was neat. And then, uh, I had the pleasure and the honor of, uh, attending a meeting with the mayor last week, Friday, at Estrella Mountain Community College for Veterans Placement and, uh, trying to get the needed services for our veterans here in the West Valley. Um, we learned about a, uh, program over in the East Valley and we're trying to, uh, you know, take some action and some steps to, uh, to support our veterans. Uh, little did we know, Estrella Mountain, as a community college, has already taken great strides in, uh, supporting our veterans. So if there's any that are out there or if you know a veteran who's needing assistance with their GI Bill or making a connection, uh, get them over to Estrella Mountain Community College, uh, not that I want to sound like a commercial, but, um, it's real, uh, uh, real advantageous for them and, and it's focused strictly on, uh, on veteran services. So looking forward to, uh, the future with that.
Well, I think to add to that, and, uh, just a moment, I'll get back to the rest of council, I, I think they need to know that that placement program they have is, uh, is quite developed and they're, they're very active, lots of, uh, of vets in taking classes at this time, but I think it was even more surprising is that they have actually got, uh, have a room now for the, that they're completing for the veterans. And so it'll be a room, it'll be equipped with, with computers, um, and other information items for them, a place for coffee break. And then they had a sort of a, another room, how would it, how did they say that? The quiet room. Uh, so a number of these vets coming in from, uh, different camp, combat areas, you know, uh, having to deal with some of the things they're dealing with, that they, they needed a room also, that it was more of a quiet room, that they could, uh, concentrate and do some of the things they needed to do. What our goal is, um, is to, uh, look for a grant, um, to pay for one additional person to work into this, in this facility that would focus on actually going out into the market and, uh, talking to businesses, something, uh, on a one-on-one basis and matching people up. So that's what our, our group is working on and, um, during our time in Washington, um, probably Mr. Smiley and myself will meet with a couple of the congressmen and see if we can get some additional help towards this goal. So, thank you, Bill, for talking about that. Next, who is, yeah, yeah, Jennifer, go ahead.
The last couple of weeks have been a couple of fun weeks for me personally. Um, like Sheri, I got a, a chance to talk with the third graders up at Estrella Mountain Elementary School and it's funny, the thank you letters came home today with my daughter and she was excited to know that the mayor was George Lord. So it was funny, some of the comments were really cute, but I'd like to thank, uh, Matt Legori and Cindy Mason for letting me take along a couple of little trinkets for the kids. They really seemed to like those. They were some older buttons of the city of Goodyear and the kids loved them, so, thank you. Um, CompStat, I got to go to my very first CompStat meeting, uh, January sixteenth and I was really impressed with how informative it is, the communication that takes place between our, um, our leaders in, within the police department and the organization. I just, I think you're doing a phenomenal job and, and that was amazing. I've wanted to go to one of those for several years, so I'm glad I finally made it. Uh, the groundbreaking, the nine-one-one groundbreaking, I was sitting next to Wally and I said, "You know what? A great day in Goodyear." It's another great, we have so many of these great days, but really, that was just a wonderful event. And getting back to the third graders, my daughter told her class that I had a really boring job. Well, she saw the groundbreaking on TV that night and begged to go to the groundbreaking at Millennium High School and she had a blast. So it's just kind of fun being able to show her all the great things happening in the city and the progress and the things that will be here when she's, you know, my age and, and, uh, so it's been fun.
Look at the lesson she's getting in government. You can't beat that. Who else, uh? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Well, I just wanted to, uh, give some congratulations on those ground, groundbreaking with the nine-one-one center and Millennium High School. I realized that when I was standing there that I've literally had kids in that school for ten years and, uh, this is really, uh, a, a big deal and, and what's really funny is that all the teenagers say, "Thank God, our school's not gonna be pink anymore." I mean, that's what I've been hearing. So that, you know, and also congratulations to Dick's Sporting Goods, their grand opening and what a fabulous facility they have. Um, also really, you know, top-notch for a distribution center and built around their employees and I, I really thought that was awesome. Um, I did attend, uh, the governor's luncheon when she was, uh, giving her address to, um, really the Southwest Valley and also my homeless youth connection. Probably one of the places that I did go that took me quite by surprise and got me a little, um, shall we say, revved up, was the Arizona Small Business Association.
No, you got revved up?
Not me. I'm, I'm such not that person. Um, Arizona Small Business Association, it was their annual, um, meeting. It was the outlook for two thousand thirteen, you know, I'm a business owner, great place to be. It was out at the Phoenician, hundreds of people there and they had this panel of speakers. I was probably the only elected person in that entire room and one of the panelists was the lead person, um, for the tax reform for, um, the state, which I agree with tax reform. And he went into the fact that, uh, the cities have, have agreed on seven of the ten different issues, but then he went on to demonize us and truly tried to get to the small businesses behind him in how terrible we are being and that they ha, we have these huge lobbying groups, the League of Cities, that, um, and I just was sitting there with my mouth, just because all I wanted to do was stand up and go, "What?" And so, you know, and then he, by the way, he said that, uh, we only wanted sales tax because we wanted our government, um, programs. And I sat there thinking, "Oh, police and fire is programs." You know, and I just, I was just dumbfounded and so, um, it was really disappointing that it was so one-sided in the conversation and I thought you all should know that. So that was my last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Well, I, that, uh, well, I won't even go into it. It's not worth it. Yeah, there isn't. Any other? Any others? No? Well, I just have, uh, thank you for mentioning all those things, the nine-one-one, all of that. I mean, it, it was so rewarding to know, finally, the nine-one-one operations center is going to be built and you know, they've waited a long, long time and those workers that worked under just really dire straits in that, in that small building and, and the, the bottom line is the safety of our citizens is gonna increase by that nine-one-one center. I just want to mention one thing I went to along with some of those other things you mentioned is the fifty-sixth Fighter Wing Annual Awards Banquet, uh, at Tuscany and this is a very special time when they give individual awards out to, um, to, uh, a lot of the enlisted as well as a few of the officers. Um, and, uh, each, each category, they probably had five, five individuals competing. And what happens when they win this award, then they will be put in with all the other bases throughout the country, through the United States and Europe, and they'll compete again, um, until finally they'll pick a winner on all the categories. So, uh, these are, are outstanding individuals that go beyond, beyond their duty to accomplish a great deal, not only for you as citizens, uh, but for their self-pride in what they do. So we'll just keep a lookout for them to see, you know, if anybody from Luke wins and then, um, what I'd like to do is bring them, the ones that are stationed at Luke, bring them before us and honor them, uh, for their accomplishments. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have no, uh, updates, manager updates tonight. I do have the one, uh, item that we'll be looking at, uh, that is Wall of the Stars. Uh, so, you know, that one popped up, uh, and we do some recognition at City Hall, but it's certainly something we'll, we'll take a look at. Beyond that, uh, we will be giving updates on the library. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like. That's left over from the work session as far as what we can put on our website that really promotes what's happening there. Uh, beyond that, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Any inquiries of staff?
Yes. Can I piggyback on the Wall of Stars? See, this site is just gonna come up with lots of ideas. And I don't know if we do this, but if we're doing a Wall of Stars, Phoenix does like a point of pride where they put a little sign like on the new park, Parque de Paz and, you know, and let's just make it everything, you know, maybe more than just people, but like if there's a, like when the Parque de Paz opened, that's, it should be like a point of pride and get a little city sign there or have nominations for something.
Oh, we're coming up with some great ideas tonight.
Start it with the stars, that's why I was just thinking about that.
Sure. Okay, did you get, did you understand what that?
I'm listening.
What there? I didn't see, I didn't see you pushing your pencil, that's why I was asking. I saw you looking as in a startled manner. Okay. Just, just a, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Dogby, the discussion, oh. The discussion earlier, when we were discussing Indian School roadway, could we get a follow-up of, um, what's actually taking place on that roadway, um, I guess, west of Pebble Creek going down? Just whatever's being taken care of there, I'd like to know.
Uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor, just to be specific, what we're looking at doing now in terms of keeping it in decent repair, but I, I think your question is more is what are we looking at doing in conjunction with ADOT to expand the street? How many lanes? When will it be done? Is that more what you're looking at?
Well, I know that that was certainly an issue, um, with my fellow council members, but like I said, it just needs to be made. Even the two lanes that are there right now are just in terrible, terrible shape. So follow up on that, whether it's, you know, just putting down something because you have a plan that next year you plan on, um, advancing it for whatever, but something has to be done now, currently, not a year from now. It, it's in that bad of shape.
Uh, we will provide updates, absolutely, as far as keeping it in repair now and then also what the future is, next couple of years.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, just announced, the next work session is, uh, February fourth and, uh, and then the regular council meeting begins February eleventh. So thank you very much for all your participation tonight. With that, the meeting's adjourned.